Good evening and welcome to the September 21 Chattoom Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chattoom Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID number is 134208476 pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Let me, a reminder for everyone to mute your audio and shut off your cameras. And the Board of Health last night came out with another public emergency order. And basically, what that means for us in the room is we will all wear masks. However, I can, the Chair can allow you to take your mask off when you're speaking and I'll allow that, I allow that, whether at the podium or on the dais, if you'd like to take your mask off while speaking. Okay, just a quick overview. We'll look at, we have two sets of minutes tonight that we'll go through. Then we have public announcements and agenda item requests. And that's just it, announcements and agenda item requests. We then have new business where we have an update on coronavirus and drinking water. Both of those will have public input during, during the presentations. We then go into public comments on our business agenda. But before we get to our business agenda, we have a public hearing on utility polls on Middle Road. Then we enter our business agenda, special one-day wine and malt beverage permit, Coast Guard Station, an update, report on alternatives providing shore protection and mitigating shelling. It's a, it's a big, big report, but it's, if you see it online, it's well worth reading. And then I'll convene the Affordable Housing Trust and we'll go into an executive session. So, I need a little, so let's go right to the minutes. Oh, I need a roll call, that's right. Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, roll call for a quorum. Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair is present. So we'll go into the minutes. First one are September 7. Any inputs?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a second?
Second.
I do have one sentence I'd like to add on, at the end of the fourth paragraph on page six. It was noted that residential tax exemptions, I'll go slow, Cam, and you can get it. It was voted, noted that residential tax exemptions are more appropriate in cities with large number of rentals and communities with second homeowners over 70 to 75%. Chattoom has a 56% second homeowner. Any problem? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I have a phrase I wanted to add in that same paragraph. I guess it would appear just before the language you just read, in the final line after the phrase "to review such," I want to add the following. "And by taxpayers to qualify their trusts for the exemption." I'll read that again. "And by taxpayers to qualify their trusts for the exemption." Here, and the sentence would end with a period there.
Okay, thank you. Any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next paragraph down, middle of the paragraph, page six. "It was suggested the town investigate other methods of providing tax relief. It was suggested as a future agenda item that the town investigate other methods of providing relief."
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. We start with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Next are the September 14 minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Shereen. Any comments? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I have two additions. First is on page eight, the second paragraph, the third line, right in the middle, after the phrase "the select board could," I want to insert withhold the 5% match from the town warrant, or, and that's the phrase, I'll repeat that.
Yeah.
Withhold the 5% match from the town warrant, or. And then on page 12, I want to add a sentence in the third paragraph, right at the end, I want to add this sentence. "It was expressed that the select board be cautious about involving itself in airport matters." Period. "It was expressed that the select board be cautious about involving itself in airport matters." I, I offered that thought at the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, let's have a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Okay, we have now public, excuse me, public announcements and agenda item requests. Any from the floor? Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You ready to do this?
Yep.
Turn your microphone on.
Green.
Green.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Ann Thompson. I am here tonight to request an agenda item as a result of an unpleasant experience at the September 13 Planning Board meeting. I was masked, vaccinated, tested negative for COVID, but seemed to present a real threat to one of the board members. I thought I was attending a public meeting, and as a taxpayer, year-round resident and voter in Chattoom, assumed I was within my legal rights. I did not attempt to speak or put my hand up. The board member who spoke at great length clearly did not want me to speak at all. He waited an hour into my attendance until public comment to complain to the board about my presence. Although Katie Donovan explained that I could not be prohibited from a public meeting, I left immediately as I felt much like the character bearing a scarlet A in Nathaniel Hawthorne's classic, The Scarlet Letter. We have hopefully come a long way since the Salem witch hunts. At the same meeting, one citizen who wished to speak was cut off in midstream by the Chair when they mentioned the runway protection zone, whilst a letter on a similar subject, RPZ, was read in full by the Chair. We cannot have double standards. Boards must treat all citizens fairly and equitably. I request, as a courtesy to citizens, the select board discuss and establish a set of standards defining public meeting attendance for all committees, including regulatory boards. Legal advice from Town Council during this public agenda discussion would finally clarify the procedures available for your viewers and all property owners, lawyers, business leaders at all who wish to speak at future meetings. Precise definition of whether hybrid is indeed a legal term and what protocols are required of public meetings. The public often provides significant and well-researched germane information. They can be a great asset. They are not all computer savvy, and sitting on a phone for two hours or more is not an easy task for seniors or for busy young adults with families, and so often we get cut off or muted. Thank you for allowing me and others to speak at this podium. I am very grateful that you are allowing it. Public speech is one of the most valuable tools of a democracy and should be encouraged and respected by government officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I see Elaine Gibbs is on. Okay, Elaine, just.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an agenda. Are you hearing feedback?
No, but you're coming in fine.
Okay, it sounds like it's coming from your room. Anyway, I have an agenda item request. Because of our well situation with the PFAS and a potential drought situation in the coming year, I would ask that you discuss lifting the bottled water ban that is to take effect on December 31st. You are allowed to do so under the Section 3 of Exemptions, which states the sale or distribution occurring subsequent to a declaration of emergency by the Emergency Management Director or other duly authorized town, county, or commonwealth or federal official. And I think this is a potential emergency for us. I know on social media, people are trying to find bottled water, but because most of our surrounding towns have also banned it, they can't get it, and I don't think they should be, have to go off Cape. So I would urge you to discuss that and consider postponing it, and to urge our surrounding communities to do the same until we resolve the PFAS problem, get all of our wells 4, 5, 8, 10, 11 up and running, and to make sure that we're not going headed into a drought next summer and where there will be more restrictions on our water. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I neglected to raise my hand prior. Just want to follow up as an agenda item on repairs to the pump house across from the Marconi Station, and also the expenditure of CPC funds for the repair of the antenna on the, at the Marconi. The issue's been raised to me by a number of people, and I just want to follow up on where we are with respect to the repairs to the, to the building across the street from Marconi. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just want to make a simple request for, this was slightly more the timely manner. This past week, the Board and the Airport Commission got letters concerning the Fisherman Storage. The, 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 the main thrust of the letter is to look for an extension on the existing location by those who are using it, which is under the purview of the Airport Commission. But in the event that that does not go well, I think it would be beneficial for the town to consider a discussion to see if there's a temporary site for the fisherman. We'd have to determine where that site is, who exactly are we offering it to, all the dynamics there, because the reality is the gear's going to come out at some point and it's going to go somewhere. So it might be beneficial for us to have a discussion to see if we can come up with at least a temporary location for the fisher, at least the local fisherman for, for that unit, because the deadline is coming up next month, I believe, for cleanup. So it is a little bit time-sensitive. So if we could have that discussion, also, you know, keep a watch on what the Airport Commission does on their side, but having a dual path might be a beneficial mechanism to, to address the situation. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. Do you have anyone? No?
No.
Okay. Now, let's go on to our new business, and next is our coronavirus update.
So, Mr. Chair, we do have Dr. Bob with us.
Hello, oh, hey, Bob. Welcome, Dr. Bob.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. So, just a quick update tonight. As of yesterday afternoon, we have 384 total confirmed cases of COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, so roughly, you know, March 1 of 2020. We had, have had 23 cases in September of this year so far. So we're at the 21st day of the month, and we've already had 23 cases. Last September, in September of 2020, we only had eight cases for the total of the month. So we are roughly three times ahead of last year's pace, and we still have 10 days to go this month. So that is part of the reasoning for the Board of Health adopting their emergency order last night, requiring mask-wearing at all indoor meetings within town. We have had seven cases in the past week, so from September 12 through the 20th, we had a total of seven cases. Three of those cases were in vaccinated individuals, three individuals were not vaccinated, and one individual, we don't know their vaccination status. So again, approximately 50/50 between COVID-positive PCR cases in vaccinated individuals versus unvaccinated individuals. And again, that was also information that caused the Board of Health to vote, as they did yesterday afternoon, on the emergency face covering order, which went into effect immediately, and I see by your meeting tonight that you folks are well aware of that change with the Board. So with that, that's my quick update for tonight. We did have an uptick, a very slight uptick, in both the percent positivity as well as the average daily incident rate, with information that came out last Thursday, for the prior two weeks. So unfortunately, the downward trend that we saw the previous week did not continue. As we've talked about before, that data is always coming out basically a week later than it's, it's germane to. But all three of those factors factored into the Board of Health's decision last night. So with that, I'd happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Bob, thanks for the update. Just the question that I typically ask of the seven new cases, do we know how many were symptomatic versus asymptomatic?
It was split about 50/50, and the people that were symptomatic, again, the symptoms were extremely mild, you know, runny nose, little bit of a headache, that kind of thing. But again, about half of those were asymptomatic, which is consistent with what we've been seeing with this Delta variant in vaccinated individuals for a couple of months now.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the, frankly, the concern I have nationally, that so much is made of the Delta variant because it spreads so fast, and there are some bad, bad cases, but if you look at the numbers that are actually severely impacted, who are infected, I'm not sure it, it's much more than the common flu. And I do understand that and appreciate that, that, and this is a national comment, that it is the prerogative and the imperative of infectious disease specialists to want to stop or curb the spread of infection. That's, that's the ultimate goal, and I applaud that. But I ask these questions every week because of the concern I express. But let me turn to the, to the mask order of the Board of Health. So we're in this room, there are two members of the public here, we're socially dense distance. I can barely see because my glasses are fogged up. And I, I would like to see the, the Select Board request of the Board of Health that we exempt, that we allow an exemption of the mask order for meetings that are held in the large meeting room in the annex at the discretion of the Chair. Because otherwise, I think I might start participating in these meetings from, from home electronically. I can barely read what's in front of me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate the, the update, and I commend the Board of Health for, for stepping up. I would like to see an exception.
Yeah, I will certainly take that request back to the Board of Health. With regard to your first statement about the COVID-19 Delta variant being no worse than the flu, I guess I would simply say it is certainly that case in people that are vaccinated. But as we've all seen locally, nationally, right now, this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated, and the number of unvaccinated individuals that are in hospitals, in ICUs, and dying has been substantial. I don't have absolute percentages with me tonight, but I can tell you that, you know, most of the people that end up in those situations are unvaccinated. So, you know, the best thing is for people to get vaccinated. There's no question that if you're vaccinated, the majority of people that get COVID-19 have a very mild, similar flu-like symptoms, but if you're unvaccinated, it can be substantial. So I would just simply say that to make sure that everybody understands that the vaccines are doing what they are intended to do.
I completely agree with your amendment to my comment, because that's, that is absolutely true, and that's reason for getting vaccinated. And my personal view is that anybody who can get vaccinated, who doesn't have some countervening situation or condition, should get vaccinated. Absolutely the case. And, you know, I think we should do everything we can within reason to try to avert the spread of this infection, whether it affects people severely or not, but I, I think we should be reasonable. But you're absolutely correct, and I appreciate that, that, that explanation. I, I don't want to suggest that people should not get vaccinated, or should we, or that we should take any of this lightly. And as far as my, the request to the Board of Health, that was, I was throwing that out to the Board.
No, it's okay, Dean, I understand.
It's not something that they should do on my request. Thank you.
Yeah, and Dr. Bob, we'll take it through the Chair, but thank you for bringing it to the Board of Health. Shereen?
No problem.
Dr. Bob, thanks for the update today. I just, we all know that children under 12 do not have the ability to be vaccinated, so we have a great concern there. Can you give me an idea of the population demographics on the ages of the, the recent seven?
The recent seven cases, they ranged from 18 to upper 60s. Pretty much, you know, they weren't, they weren't all concentrated in one particular age group. It was pretty well spread out.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just, I have deep concern for our children that have gone back to school in the last couple of weeks. All right, thank you.
Yeah, this, this was one of the first weekends, or I think the last two, where we haven't seen any children, say, under the age of 12 specifically, which we have seen in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the Board? Anything from the public? I don't see anyone. You do?
Elaine.
Oh, there it is. Oh, Elaine, okay, go ahead, Elaine.
Yes, I just had one question about the seven cases last week. Were they all seven different households, or were some of them family members?
There was one household with two individuals, and all the others were single individuals in a household, or, you know, single individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Seeing no others. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is a drinking water testing and pumping update. Tom Temple, I think you're on. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. As you all know well, 5 and 8 remain offline due to PFAS detection. The pumpage for the month of September up through and including the 18th of September is 20.1% less than the same time last year. We ended up taking samples today for wells 5 and 8. We should have those results back around the 29th or the 30th of September. The wells themselves are pumping between 9 and 15, so we've had a break as far as how, how long they've been pumping. We were seeing them up in the 19 and 20 per day with all the rain that we've had. There's a significant drop in the last week. We only hit the low level two times this past week on the water storage tanks. Western and Sampson's CMR Division continues to rehab Indian Hill Well 4. It's my understanding that Western and Sampson plans to do their tentative testing for Well 4 on Thursday of this week. They'll be doing the alarm calls, the wet test, where they'll fill up all the pipes, the chemical bulk tanks, the... the chemical bulk tanks, the day tanks, high and low chlorine testing. Once they finish that, then they'll provide their information, as well as a checklist to DEP. DEP is planning on coming through tentatively the following week, midweek, to run through testing protocols with Western and Sampson on Well 4. Our hope is that everything goes smoothly, and we're hoping that we stay on track and we're able to put that Well 4 online by the first week in October like we talked about. We did have a small problem this morning at 9:00, where we had one of our filters that the gasket blew for well number nine. We were without the filter all day up until about 4:00 this evening. We had to cut back well six and seven each by about 100 gallons per minute to make sure we can maintain our levels that we're looking for for all our wells. We do have everything up and operational as of 4:30 this afternoon, so we're back in business with that. So very critical time for the water side of things. You know, I know there's another item coming up for discussion on as far as the mandatory water ban, so it is important to know that with, you know, 980 gallons per minute offline, as well as the reduction of well two and three when they get to three feet within the screen level, that we've lost probably anywhere from 30 to 35% of our capacity because of the loss of these two wells. So I just want everybody to just keep that in mind when they're discussing that next item. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Before we go on to that item, any comments or questions from the Board, Tom? Tom? Any from the public? You see anything? I don't see anything on there. Okay, let's move on to clarify the extent of outdoor watering ban. We had a number of comments by people on watering, especially some of the fishermen at Ryder's Cove, and some other issues that were brought up. Jill?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So with the Board's action last week, we banned all outdoor watering, and the thought was, I think primarily for irrigation systems and watering lawns by hand, as well as gardens. But we've had a couple of questions come up of exactly what that means. So questions have included washing of vehicles and boats, washing of decks, furniture, or houses, filling or topping off swimming pools or hot tubs, wash down hoses at town landings. Those were removed, but they have been since reinstated, pending the Board's action tonight. Watering of new lawns, new plantings and saplings, and watering at the community gardens. So we're respectfully asking the Board to specify which outdoor water uses are banned per your order.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Any comments from the Board? I'll make one comment. I mean, it's just, like anything, good intentions, and you put something in, and sometimes you have unintended consequences, and it's, we have the luxury to fix it. Dr. Bob? Okay. Dr. Bob, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to add two more that came to my attention the other day, and that is boat engine flushing. As boats are being hauled out this time of the year, they are generally given a freshwater rinse internally to remove any of the salt water, so that doesn't sit over the course of the winter. And the second item that was brought to my attention is power washing of boat bottoms when they're hauled out. So I think those are the other two that I heard of, in addition to the ones that the town manager kind of brought to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Joe, could you just please go through the list again? Because I do think it was the intent of the Board to, you know, to mandate that the watering of lawns be ceased. But, you know, if you're hauling your boat out and you need to flush the engine or power wash the bottom, I mean, I think we ought to allow that. I mean, if you ask my opinion, it's part of the normal maintenance. If you've planned or have already planted new trees or saplings, or, I mean, I think you ought to be allowed to have them, you know, get a good start, and water them. I voted thinking that, you know, there's no point in watering lawns. The heat of the summer is kind of over. We're getting the cooler weather, let natural rain take care of our lawns. Wasn't looking to be super strict with other activities, but just please go through the list, and I'll come up with an opinion, I guess.
Sure. So the first one is washing of vehicles and boats. Washing of decks, furniture, or houses. Filling or topping off swimming pools or hot tubs. Wash down hoses at town landings. Watering of new lawns, plantings, and saplings. Watering at the community gardens, plus the two that Bob just related regarding boats.
Mr. Chairman, how would you like to proceed? You want to go one by one and take a vote, or, I mean?
Well, I was going to ask, anybody have any problems with any of those? Dean? And then Jeff, I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem. With respect to the plantings, I would suggest you consider plantings and transplanting. This is the time of year when people do these sorts of things, and nurseries in particular are selling end-of-the-year stock. People look forward to that. So I wouldn't limit it to new plantings, but transplantings within your property, for example.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff, and then Cory, if you want.
I'd like to talk about pools for a second. I thought we had a deal where if you needed to fill a pool or top up a fuel, we had trucks come in from outside town. Now, where they're getting their water, I don't know, but I thought that was the deal. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I would assume that that continues, and I'm not particularly interested in having someone top off a pool in gallons and gallons and gallons of water that's coming out of the aquifer. I think that ought to come exterior to.
Okay. Let me go to Cory, then I'll go to Dr. Bob.
I think it might have been the original installation of the pools. Bob, do you recall what the regulations were?
Yeah, it was for the original filling of the pools, but a number of pools have automatic devices to maintain the water level. So if it evaporates off or whatever, they automatically kick on and fill it back up again, you know, a half inch, an inch or two at a time, and not like filling the entire pool.
Cory?
No, just on the pool subject, I think a lot of places are shutting down their pools now, so that's being drained or shut down. So I don't see, I would not expect many pools being filled at this time. Now, granted, in the spring, that's a different discussion, but at least for the immediate, you know, I don't think pools are going to be a big issue. And just my own observation, and I'm not surprised by this, and there's still a lot of irrigation systems going off, because they're on timers, and the people who own the property are not here, and I'm sure the, you know, irrigation companies that are servicing a lot of these properties can only do so much so quickly. So it's going to take a little bit of time for the irrigations to kind of settle down. It is the time of season for people to start shutting things down, and I have seen some people shutting down. I've talked to some irrigation companies who are accelerating, instead of, you know, instead of them running over to change a timer, they might as well just blow the system out anyway. So it's going to take a little time for that to kind of impact, give us the full impacts. But, I mean, my intention was to not get too micromanaging about, you know, someone blowing out an engine if they're pulling the boat out, or if they're planting a new tree and they're trying to, you know, get that to take for the future. I mean, that was not my intention. I mean, I want to be as practical as possible and kind of let common sense drive this. I mean, people understand where we're going from. The water is an issue, it's a concern. I mean, that's why we took the actions we did, but the reality is we cannot enforce every single infraction throughout the town. We want to stress common sense on this and kind of leave it as that. I mean, I don't want to get into every nook and cranny, because this is not the direction I want to go in.
Thank you, Cory. Shereen?
So when it comes to the town landing issue, it was about fishermen that had, and mariners that have, like, really expensive rod and rails, and, you know, they have to wash them down with fresh water, otherwise they get damaged and they lose, and it's a loss there. I don't see where, I mean, washing your driveway, washing a car, you know, things like that, washing your house, I think we can sort of say no to that or continue the ban there. I thought that the, you know, somebody had brought up a good point about the saplings and the small trees and things, and the transplants, Dean, that you mentioned. As far as gardens are concerned, people feed themselves, and that's an important thing. I would encourage folks to try to do rain barrels and things like that, or alternative ways to water their gardens if they can. This is where education comes into play with probably our climate change committee or something, or our water and sewer people should be putting this kind of information out. You don't want to have one of our fishing boats come out of the water and not have that bottom washed down. It's not, it's not a great thing, and certainly marinas do that, and then they put the boats away to store. And the engine flushing is also, you'd wreck a boat if you wreck an engine if you don't do that winter flushing. So I guess I'm okay with most of the things that we discussed, but I think the cars and the pools and the boat, you know, the boats and the houses kind of thing is problematic.
Okay, any other comments? I do have one question for either Tom or Dr. Bob. Looking at these in total or individually together, is there anything that really strikes you as could be a problem for us? Just a problem as far as, you know, pumping? I know it's a generalized question, but anything that pops up that's a concern? I guess that's a no.
Yeah, I don't see a problem. I agree with the boats. I agree with the, you know, the watering of new saplings, new trees that planted, because this is the time you do that, and minimizing, you don't need a lot, you know, they provide these bags that allow you to fill up with water, but slowly let it out over a period of time. So, and new grass that you're trying to establish, it's not something where you have a green lawn, as most people will tell you, you only need an inch of water a week to maintain that. So I think over the next month is the critical point for us, with all the pumpages and everything, to try to get Well 4 online. So, you know, if we can get, if some of the boats can wait for a couple of weeks to, you know, before they pull them out, and not everybody pulling it all at once in the next two weeks, that would be helpful. But I agree with most of those, as you indicated, for, you know, minor watering.
Jill, on the two that Shereen mentioned, could you read those, and then we can decide as a Board whether we'd like to keep those? There was one for washing houses, and the other was driveways. I didn't think driveways was on there.
Driveways and decks or something.
Yes, so the, when the Board had first considered the voluntary order, it included no washing of sidewalks, driveways, or vehicles. And so we had that carried forward as part of the total outdoor water ban, but that's something that you should confirm for us. So washing of vehicles and boats, washing of decks, furniture, or houses, and then the others were filling or topping off swimming pools or hot tubs, and the watering at the community gardens.
Yeah. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman and Board members, I would suggest that we have all those activities cease and desist until we get four online. I mean, when I hear Tom say this is a critical time, it's a critical time. So I don't think we should be topping up pools and washing driveways or houses when we know we're at crunch time for our water supply. So I would suggest that until we get four online, that we continue, cease and desist all those activities, including watering your lawn. Now, if you just planted seed, or if you have a sapling or something alive, or if you have a garden that needs to be watered to eat, then I suggest that that's okay. But washing houses, washing driveways, even washing cars, deck furniture, I mean, come on. If we have a critical water ban going on, which we do, then we shouldn't be doing those things. I just think that's common sense. That's what I think.
Any other comments? I would agree with that personally. Do we have any other questions? So do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Except for the, with the exception, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think vegetable gardens we can water. If we've got saplings going in, there were a couple of emails about trees being planted around town, and they're planted, they need to be watered. Well, gosh, water them, but we don't want gardens or trees to die. But a house can wait to be washed, deck furniture can wait to be washed, pools frankly can wait to be topped up, and we're, until we at least get number four online, unless we revisit the issue. But until then, I'm not comfortable with saying, hey, it's all good, except don't water your lawn. The more I think about it, the more exercised I get about it, to be honest with you.
I agree. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I think I just did. So moved. So maybe Dean can clean it up.
I'll second it. I just wanted to ask for a clarification. What about, you mentioned saplings, what about planting and transplanting?
I think that's appropriate. I think if you're, you know, if you're going to plant a tree, I think you need to water it, you know?
Okay.
But again, there's a window here. If we got a couple of weeks till we get four online, then maybe you wait a couple of weeks to plant a tree. I'm just, let's use common sense as a town.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a second.
We need a clarification on this.
Yes. That, and I just want to, the duration, so the total ban, are we looking until like October 15th?
Whenever.
Or, I'm not sure, we can ask Tom, you know, what's the extent? We're meeting pretty much every week.
I, or maybe Jeff, I'd consider it to be until?
Until well number four comes online.
Or until we?
Until we get through this critical phase where we're not, you know, he said we're pumping, we were pumping.
The date to be determined.
Yeah. I think it depends on pumpage and utilization and four being online, until we can maybe take a pause and breathe a sigh of relief a little bit. Because consumption will go down, you know, as we get into the fall and continue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so the list, just want to confirm. So no washing of sidewalks, driveways, or vehicles, and boats. No washing of decks, furniture, or houses. No filling or topping off of swimming pools or hot tubs. And that's it. Everything else could be allowed.
So you can't, so you can't power wash the bottom of a boat if you haul a boat out and you can flush an engine? That's critical.
Yeah, right, I was going to say.
And you can wash down your gear.
You can wash your gear down.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, as amended.
Is there any public comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Any public comment on that?
Yeah, I was just, want to make sure.
Dr. Bob has his hand up again.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Dr. Bob, go ahead.
Well, maybe a moot point out, but I was just going to request clarification on the plantings, because one of the things that we do deal with this time of year is mitigation planting required, mitigation plantings required by the Conservation Commission under various permits. So I just wanted to make sure that we had that, but it sounds like you're not, that those would be allowed.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I would say so.
I would say yes. Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other public comment? You see anything?
I don't see any.
All right, Ann, go ahead.
You need to sort of say whether your watering of plants and trees and new saplings or whatever also applies to private wells. You haven't covered that.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Does it all apply to private wells?
We have a comment?
We haven't mandated it for private wells. We've encouraged private well owners to comply.
Correct.
That's consistent with what we've done before. Okay, any other comments? Elaine?
Yeah, I would just point out, you know, I'm sure it's going to go through, but I think this list is a little subjective, that people can wash their pleasure boats, but people can't wash their cars. I don't know, that existing growth that is not edible should not be watered, but gardens can with, if they have vegetables. I think you're getting into the weeds here, and I think people will use their judgment. I mean, if they have scheduled a house washing because their house has mold on it and they got to get it done, I don't know. I think you should leave it up to people to use their best judgment and let them know it's critical. Everybody's going to try and do their best, but people, sometimes if they have to take their furniture into the basement, they want to wash it down before they put it away for the winter. So again, I think a little bit of, we should be given a little bit of credit here for doing what we need to do to close up for the winter and not be frivolous without having it mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Jeff, did you still, Cory?
I know I should bite my tongue and not even say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. The reality is, we are, we don't have the resources to police all the activities we're saying, you know, about watering a car down or a driveway down or irrigation off. I mean, even my own observation, irrigation systems are still going off. We told, said, no. We just got to stress how important conserving of the water is, and hope people use their judgment, because the reality is, we can't be eyes everywhere, and that's just the fact, the clear facts that are in place right now. And, you know, irrigations will be shut down, people use discretion, some people won't use discretion. use discretion, but we just got to stress how important it is, and that is the reality of it. And I don't want to put these false impressions that just everyone's going to be ticketed or fined moving forward, because we just don't have the resources to do that, and I don't think we should be doing that. But I think we should stress how important conserving the water is, so we can all make it through this at the end and be in a good place with our water system. But, you know, I just want to be realistic about it, too.
Thank you, Corey. Shereen, and then Dean.
I take a different tack than you on that, Corey, and I believe that if we're saying we're mandating this, then people pay attention to that, whereas if you're stressing conservation, which I think that's an everyday occurrence, to stress conservation with our water usage, and that's not happening, people are subjective to say, well, that doesn't apply to me. And so I think that there would be a more conscientious effort if we're voting to mandate these restrictions and send a strong message to the community, like just what you said maybe five or 10 minutes ago, that we have a critical issue on our hands with the wells, and this is for the time being, and then we'll come back and look at this shortly. It's still early enough in the summer, fall area, that people aren't going to be winterizing tomorrow, so I'm going to vote to approve the motion.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean?
Well, thank you. I mean, this is not an easy topic, and I think both Corey and Elaine made some very good points. And I'm wondering, what is the language that we voted? Can you read it, particularly with respect to outside watering?
I don't know if this is exactly what was in the minutes, I could probably look it up, but it was a total outdoor watering ban effective immediately that was voted on September 14th.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, in the body of the?
The motion this evening.
No, not the motion tonight, what we actually voted in.
Cam, do you have that, or is it in our minutes? It was just last week.
It's probably on the town website.
While she's looking, just a comment on.
Is it in the minutes?
Elaine's comment about pleasure boats. I thought we eliminated that. Jeff?
Yeah, if you're hauling your boat out for the winter and you need to clean the bottom of the boat, you can pressure wash the bottom of your boat. And just a comment, you know, this is tough, I don't think this is forever, but if you can, again, use some common sense and not wash your house today, but wait a couple or three weeks, then that would be better than doing it today. I think that's the point of singling out some of these perhaps more superfluous uses of our water, dear water resource, that's all. And I don't, you know, hopefully this will end after we get number four online, and, you know, we get a pause here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the motion that was voted on the 14th of September, motion by Jeffrey Dykens to approve a total outdoor watering ban effective immediately, and to communicate with irrigation companies about the ban, and ask that they reach out to their customers.
Yes, but that was implemented by the posting on the town website of the four or five specific provisions. That's what I was getting at. And as I understood, and I voted for it, Mr. Dykens' motion last week, it was to approve the recommendation as presented to us in a memo from the Water Department.
I'm just trying to bring up this.
Yeah, and the reason I'm inquiring about this is that wondering, I'm wondering if instead of, you know, a menu of things that are prohibited, we could come up with some language that allows some discretion on the part of the rate payer, that's consistent with the goal of preventing the overuse of water, but at the same time, doesn't.
I see, Dr. Bob, I'm letting Dean finish.
Doesn't tax the ability of the town to enforce it. I don't think there's been a whole lot of citations or fines that have been issued thus far, anyway. Thank, I'll defer to Dr. Duncanson.
Yeah, Dr. Duncanson, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the memo that was presented to the board for your previous meeting had two options. Option A was the total ban, if you will, and an option B did have a change the current water conservation measures to where watering was only allowed two days a week for odd-numbered houses, two days a week for even-numbered houses, and there was no watering at all, if I recollect correctly, on Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. We clarified the language to only limit watering to one inch or less per week, as opposed to one inch or less per event, as well as continuing to ban on watering of driveways and driveways, vehicles, and sidewalks. So those were the two options that were presented to the board, and the actual vote by the board, as read by the town manager, was for the total ban option. So I hope that helps.
It does, it does, because the language driveways, vehicles, and sidewalks, I mean, those are the big-ticket items, I think, that we're talking about. And, you know, I am a little bit concerned about the subjectivity of trying to assess, you know, which activities should be permitted and which not, and that may present some issues on the enforcement side. So I just throw it out for the board to consider perhaps modifying the motion to focus on those larger activities that will consume much more water, and less, focus less on the types of smaller things that, as Corey has suggested, and Ms. Gibbs has suggested, you know, may be best left as a matter of judgment. I respect what Select Board Member Davis has said. I think it's important that whatever we decide to ban, we make clear it's banned. I just throw that out for discussion as we're considering the vote on this motion, which I seconded, by the way.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, just to continue, I mean, there is a difference between a mandate and using moral suasion, if you will, and asking folks to use their better judgment, and, you know, I think Chatham residents can use their better judgment. So perhaps the motion should read, you know, those activities that consume large volumes of large gallons per minute, or large volumes of water, should be forestalled for a three-week period after we get, you know, well four online. If we don't want to enunciate or delineate activities that are in or out, I get it, but the point is, we've got a critical water shortage right now, in that I think if you could, you don't have to wash your house in the next three or four weeks, don't do it. If you don't have to put the deck furniture away for the next three or four weeks, don't do it. If you need to keep a plant alive, do it. But, you know, it's just using common sense, I get it. But, you know, we have to emphasize the fact that this is pretty critical here, and so we are now asking the town to forestall those activities that consume large amounts of water in town. I don't know how much more clear we can be. Now, does that include, you know, that does include washing a house, and, you know, those superfluous activities that one might be able to postpone for a bit? That's what I'm aiming for. And if you're hauling your boat for the year, and you need to clean the bottom of the boat, you got to clean the bottom of the boat. If you don't, you're totally messing up your boat for the entire winter and the next year. You got to do it next year, it's impossible to clean. So I mean, those activities that are critical to, you know, well, you got to use your common sense. Otherwise, we're going to mandate a whole bunch of activities that we don't want to have happen, and I get it. It's very difficult to enunciate all those activities, number one, be 100% accurate, and number two, enforce it in any meaningful way. So I'm willing to appeal to moral suasion and to the common sense of our citizens to forestall the use of a lot of water in the next three or four weeks until we get number four online. I mean, I'm willing to do that. I don't know, unless you can come up with language, Dean, that satisfies everybody or satisfies them. I mean, I think a mandate's stronger, I agree with Selectman Davis, but if people are going to be confused, I don't know whether to do this, I don't know whether to do that, then I just say, use their common sense. I mean, if you don't need to wash your car, don't wash your car. If it rains, all the, if it rains. I don't know.
All right, any other comments from the board? How about from the public before we have a little discussion on this? I don't see any. I think the important thing to mention, as Jeff mentioned, is we are in the middle of an emergency. We have a problem. We have a real problem with our water and how much we pump. Question is, you know, when you start becoming very definitive on what you're going to ban, that always point, somebody always has something else that says, well, if you do that, why can't I do this? And I get that.
I get it, too.
Having something general doesn't really, you leave it up to people's common sense, and, you know, I generally lean in that direction. But in this case, when you have an emergency, large numbers, using a lot of water, if we could, I don't know if it's appropriate to say, for example, houses, that's still a ban, but washing a house is not a necessity right now, I would agree with that. Filling your pool, maybe if I had a pool, oh, when I did, you know, that would be a concern for me, but it's not an immediate concern over the next three weeks or four weeks. So let me, let's go back, what's our motion right now, and then we can see how we move from there. Do you have that?
Let's ask him.
What we have for a motion? Because we've gone around in circles a little.
Yeah, we have a little bit.
The motion for a total water ban?
No, we suggested.
So to.
It was generally approval of all the things that were there, except for a few, a couple?
Except for washing houses, filling pools, washing sidewalks, washing vehicles, boats, yes.
The bottom of boats, yes.
Bottom of boats, yes, flushing a boat engine, and then for new planting saplings, that's okay.
I don't think that's, I mean, does anybody have a real problem with that? Yeah, I get it, but, I mean, you know, you could have differences. That's not, that's not over detailed, I don't think.
Mr. Chair.
And if it's a problem, we come back and do it again.
Yeah, Jeff, your motion actually said until well number four comes online.
Yeah, and I think that's the important point.
Mike?
Yeah, I think that's until well number four comes online, or that the crisis, you know, is we can take a pause in the crisis, Brad, we're not pumping so many hours, our demand is down, and, you know, I think we defer to Tom and Bob on that moment, if you will. I think number four coming online is critical. We took eight offline, we really got to get four online, and we're still in it, I think we're still in a critical phase, so.
I'm leaning towards the problem that we do have a crisis, and if it's a little uncomfortable, it is, then we can, if it's really a problem, we'll come back and we fix it again.
I think we're going around and searching.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we are. Do we have a motion?
Go on.
I have a second. Any more discussion?
No.
Any at all? Okay, ready for a vote? Okay, I'll start at the other end. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, good discussion, but, and ladies. Thank you, Dr. Bob and Tom. We have now public comments on our agenda items, which would include special one-day wine and malt, Coast Guard Station, and report transmittal on alternatives to shore protection. Anybody have any public comments on that? I don't see any on here or on this thing. So let's move to the public hearing on utility poles. Corey?
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, to place 12, per n, 12, close per n, new poles, and four, per n, four, close per n, four, push braces on south side of the Middle Road from Gander Way to Sam Rider Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person, or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda, or by calling 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476-Pound. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Select members of the Select Board.
Thank you, Corey. Tom Temple going to talk to this, or someone from N-Star available?
We have Marissa Jackson from EverSource.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board. My name's Marissa Jackson from EverSource Energy, and what I'm proposing this evening is, just to clarify, it's the installation of 12 new poles, including the four push braces, and this will, the purpose of this construction would be to accommodate a new solar project going along Middle Road.
Thank you. Any comments from the board, questions from the board? Corey?
I know, I know the answer to this one. Ever consider going underground?
Yes, we had our team of engineers out to the location, and, you know, I do understand aesthetically, people would prefer underground, but for this particular project, we would have to keep it overhead.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How far down Middle Road does this go?
Sure, so between each pole is roughly 140 feet, give or take, and that will begin at the corner of Sam Rider and Middle Road, but on the side closest to the transfer station, and that will continue along all the way and end directly across the street from Gander Way.
Gander Way. It's right down to the edge of where the Dubus property, the old Dubus property was.
Got it, okay.
That's what, quarter of a mile?
Yeah.
Shereen?
I just, a quick question. I just wanted to know what kind of tree cutting and all that would have to occur to install the poles? I don't know if I saw that in the packet.
Yeah, that's a great question. There has been nothing addressed about tree trimming. When I took a ride out to the location myself, there was already white stakes, wooden stakes, as well as white paint, indicating where the poles would be set, and there was nothing, you know, tied with a ribbon as far as tree trimming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Anything else from the board? I don't have anything else. Any public comment? I see nothing in the room. How about, nothing? Okay, I don't have anything. We have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the request and petition for placement of the 12 new poles as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start Shereen.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, getting into our business agenda, the first one is a special one-day wine and malt beverage for Mahi Gold, 465 Bain Street. And.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, so I'm Jennifer Pearl, I'm the manager of Mahi Gold, and the owner had already applied for the liquor license application, and so it's just for, let's see, five dates for the holiday season.
Okay, I have a couple of questions before I go to the board, just, I noticed you're going noon to 8:00 PM on one day, and then noon to 9:00. It's, you're offering, you know, you're offering wine and beer, it sounds like.
Correct.
There was no discussion on how it's going to be.
It most likely will be 12 to 6:00.
I'm sorry?
It will most likely, the hours will be 12 to 6:00.
Okay.
So it won't be till 8:00 or 9:00. On the uncertain days, actually, now that I'm looking at the dates. What was your question?
Well, I was wondering how it was going to be controlled and what it's going, people are becoming in and out, is it inside, outside? There's no, there's no real discussion on, you know, how it's going to be handled, and who's going to watch it through that period of time, and then I'll turn it over to Shereen. It's a general question.
Sure, it's always been inside, it's never outside our store, and, you know, we will just limit the amount of people that we have in, we'll have to, you know, as we've done, it's everything we've done in the past, we're putting in for the normal events, understanding, you know, that things could possibly change. You know, we put in for the events, but we don't know, you know, what the future holds with COVID.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman. And this is for the board, because I don't remember whether we've approved, first night is always an alcohol-free event for downtown, and it's advertised, and I don't recall whether, how we handled approval of alcohol events. And I don't recall whether, how we handled approval of alcohol events. Do you, Cory?
I don't, I was going to ask the same question. I don't, I have no memory of First Night being, having any approved events with this type of alcohol use on First Night in the history that I've been on the board.
I could tell you that I've been a volunteer at First Night for a number of years, and there wasn't. It can be a problem.
Shawna can speak to that, the licensing agent. Shawna?
Hi, yes. In the past, I would say, not last year, obviously, but in 2019, I believe, this issue started to creep up as more downtown shops took out special one-day licenses for events such as the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Stroll, obviously, and for First Night.
Just a comment about First Night. They haven't specifically decided. But what I understand is they're going to be done by 6:30 fireworks, and then they're done. They're not doing night events this year. Okay. Dean?
Yeah, I just wanted, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up with Shawna. So Shawna, have we ever approved alcohol on First Night? In any of those applications that started a couple of years ago?
I don't have all of the information in front of me, but I do, I do believe that maybe one or two were approved in 2019.
Correct, yes. We've had the liquor license approved before in the past.
For First Night?
We have had it in, for the Christmas Stroll. We've had it for Oktoberfest weekend, and First Night, I believe so.
I don't know, I, yeah. The point is, they're not going to have anything at night.
Right, it'll be, you know, just like our store hours. So, you know, the permit would be 12 to 6:00.
Yeah, and most... Any other comments? Dean, go ahead.
Well, the request is for, on these different dates, the 23rd of October, that's Oktoberfest, noon to 8:00 p.m.
Right.
Saturday, November 20th. Is that the day, that the weekend of Thanksgiving?
Small Business Saturday.
Pardon me? Small Business Saturday.
Small Business Saturday.
Okay, noon to 6:00. Friday, December 10th, Saturday, December 11th, that's the Christmas Stroll, I assume.
Correct, yeah.
Not that one.
Noon to 9:00.
Correct.
And then Friday, December 31st, noon to 9:00. I mean, I don't, myself, have an issue with the other dates. But I think we need to get some clarification on, on the New Year's Eve.
For the times, or New Year's Eve in general?
Pardon me? What's your question?
Sorry, go, I was going to say for the, for the hours that we do it, or whether we can do it at all?
I'd like to know whether we... I think, I think the, the board should, should allow Shawna to get some information back to us on whether we have allowed liquor sales on First Night. And if we haven't, we should, I'm thinking we should probably continue that tradition of not allowing it, but permit the others. We could take a vote on the other dates tonight. Defer a vote, defer a vote on December 31st until we get that information clarified when Shawna's back in the office.
And that would also clarify the timing for, that First Night is going to be doing.
Mr. Chair, and if that's the case, and if everybody's okay with that, I move to approve a special one-day alcohol license for wine and malt beverages only for Brian Vogel as representative of Mahi Gold for service at 465 Main Street on Saturday, October 23rd, noon to 8:00. Saturday, November 20th, noon to 6:00. Friday, December 10th, noon to 9:00. Saturday, December 11th, noon to 9:00. And, and we will just hold the 31st until a determination where we can readdress this after some questions are answered.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Great.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? I hear none. I'll start with...
I think that sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Wait, wait, we haven't voted yet. Hang on there, we'll be there. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now you can.
Great, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Coast Guard Station Chatham, our correspondence that we had, the brief, and the briefing, Shereen and Clerk Metters met with the Admiral. We had a couple of correspondence. So let me start with Shereen, and then we can go to Cory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody has known, that we've had an ongoing concern. Some would say a complaint, but it's a concern about the downsizing of Station Chatham's designation from a surf station to heavy weather, and then down, down, down the ranks. And a couple of other issues that we've had with communication with the Coast Guard on specific rescues that we've been part of, and as well as data collecting on the bar to determine whether the surf designation is still ongoing. So we've had several conversations, starting with, I think it was Chair Nacastro, over this concern back in, I think, maybe Dean 2018 or whatnot. And we've had ongoing discussions on and off. But in the more recent fast forward, Select Board member Metters and I have been working on getting better communications with the Coast Guard. We had, Senator Markey's office was visiting the Fish Pier. We had an opportunity to express our concerns over, over what we were seeing. And his office was very, very responsive to our concerns and immediately scheduled a meeting with Rear Admiral Allen. He's first Coast Guard District in Boston. And he met with town staff, which included Jill and our harbor master, our natural resource department, Dr. Bob, Board Member Metters, myself, and as well as a harbor master from Harwich. Where we went and we had a pretty robust meeting that lasted about two hours, I think hour and a half, two hours, at the fire station, was hosted by Chief Dave. And we gave our case of what our concerns were. What came out of that was, Markey had facilitated that meeting for us, Senator Markey's office. What has come out of that is a correspondence back and forth about what are, a continued conversation of co-sharing some of the data, trying to get better understanding of where the data, how they collected data on the surf capability, I mean, on the surf at the bar, and, you know, what we have seen. So we're going to have another meeting tomorrow. And this, again, will be with Woods Hole. I feel like we're going down the chain when we should go, be going up the chain. We're still extremely concerned about a lot of this. But we're going to have this meeting tomorrow, and we have a set agenda where we have, I don't know what his rank is, Jill? Captain?
Yeah, he's a captain.
Yeah, Captain Prindle, he's Woods Hole. Carlos was invited, who is the station chief here on Chatham. Markey's staff will be here, there, and we will be there to start to go over some of these concerns, which are the surf and weather data collection and marine broadcasts that used to go on. I know, Jeff, you might remember back when any boat went over the bar, they hailed the weather conditions, the wave conditions to the Coast Guard. That hasn't been happening. So we were talking about sort of having a better collaborative in that respect. Also, reevaluation of the appropriate assets for Station Chatham. We've asked them to put a removal of the 42 near-shore lifeboat surf vessels on hold for a considerable time until we can come to some understanding about how they came about with the, with the data and the length of why they've downgraded. The other piece is, I don't know if you all remember that hurricane that didn't happen, Henri. But 36 hours before that hurricane was to proposely hit Chatham. Or the Northeast Coast Guard had their station, their 42s out of the water. And they had all their resources out of town. So it wasn't a good look for the Coast Guard. We wanted to have a better understanding of what their role is in the community in hurricane preparedness. It really was a sad day to see that. I saw it. And after being, participating in Hurricane Bob and seeing the Coast Guard being very involved with the community boaters, for them to just bail on the town was egregious. The other piece we're going to talk about at this meeting is the search and rescue case that the harbor master had brought up about the sailboat grounding on Montemoy and the lag time of response. There's a, and we're going to discuss what our report says and what their report says, and what our next steps are going to be. I hope that we, we get there with them to some degree. We still have, you know, in your packet, you'll see a letter from Rear Admiral Allen to us after the meeting, where he, you know, expresses his, his idea that they think that they can, you know, be able to satisfy our rescue issues that we might have on the surf, on the bar. But again, we expressed how we were happy to have the meeting with them, but we still are extremely concerned over all these issues that we brought forward. So as I said, tomorrow we'll be meeting again, continuing the conversation. And I'm not sure if Cory, you have more to add to that, but that's sort of the overview of everything.
Go ahead, Cory.
No, I think Selectman Davis summarized the situation very well. I mean, the only thing I'd like to add, a few comments, I guess. One, I am very thankful for Senator Markey's office to be so helpful in facilitating the meeting with the Rear Admiral. They have been an asset to us with helping this communication move forward. It's a discussion we have to have. Coast Guard and the Town of Chatham has had a healthy relationship for quite some time. A lot of, a lot of these decisions are being made at a higher level. We, you know, we have a good relationship with Carlos Hessler and the Chatham crew. But certain decisions are, you know, being made at a national level, and it's trickling down and impacting Chatham. Chatham's a very unique area. We have unique waters, unique needs. And this kind of pause in the decision-making is something we're stressing. I do think the meeting with the Rear Admiral went much better than expected. It was a very focused, open conversation, a lot of good dialogue. I think there was a lot of listening. But we all know there's a process involved in making, making these decisions. So we have the meeting tomorrow morning with Captain Picard. And I do hope we can continue the dialogue, because, you know, the U.S. Coast Guard is critical to the safety of both our maritime, our commercial maritime, and residential maritime users. And not only for Chatham, but this whole region. So I'm very optimistic that these conversations are going to move forward. We might have to look for, you know, more help from Senator Markey and such. But I, we are having, we are having the conversation, which is a very positive element. And hopefully, we can get some better answers and work this out for the best for, for everybody. So, you know, just want to give a little update to what's going on, where we're trying to go with it.
Thank you, Cory. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the report from Board Members Davis and Metters. And I really want to applaud your initiative on the spot at the Fish Pier when Senator Markey was in town, because it paid off. And that was good thinking. I did see the handwritten personal notes that were sent to the two of you from Admiral Allen. And I, I get the sense that he's willing to, to, you know, pitch in and have his agency pitch in and work with you. I think it's a note in his letter that's in the packet. He says, "I appreciate your willingness to collaborate on a look at weather data in the Chatham area." That's something that, you know, I think they had been resistant to in the past. And I know Stuart has commented upon that. "Sector Southeast New England and Station Chatham are ready to meet with you promptly to share the details of our weather data." I guess tomorrow is the beginning of that process. "We are also happy to work together on a joint data collection effort moving forward." So that's, that's encouraging and promising. I certainly very much applaud Senator, and thank Senator Markey for stepping up on this. Obviously, that, that made a big difference. And appreciate the correspondence that was sent by Jill to the Admiral and the efforts of our harbor master. Cory kind of alluded to this, and this is my only question. Do you have a sense as to how much flexibility the Admiral has, or how much is being dictated from the higher-ups in Washington at the Department of Homeland Security or the leadership of the Coast Guard nationally? Do we get a sense of that?
Not particularly. I think that if there is issues, you know, to move forward, I think there can be, I think programmatically, there might be, he might be able to tweak some things. But I think that there would have to be a higher-up decision on most of the things, especially if we're asking to maintain the 42s here and whatnot. But, you know, as Cory said, we're a unique location. We have a unique situation. We are critical to the Coast Guard being present here for other ports, for being, going offshore. So, you know, we, Markey has his ear to it. I know Congressman Keating has his ear to it. And I think that if we had to go any other route, that we could possibly just move along into a hierarchy.
Thank you.
Like we've done before.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank Selectman Davis and Selectman Metters for their outstanding efforts in this regard. I thought the letter that was signed by Jill and copied to us was excellent to the Admiral Allen. I thought it nailed all the points. Whoever crafted it, along with Jill, did a superb job, I thought. It raised every single issue that is of concern. I also thought his letter back to us was okay. It had a little different tone, well, it had a little different tone than, than I've heard in the past. So I thought the letter back was, was a good letter. And I also circled that or highlighted that, that paragraph at the end where they appreciate their willingness to talk about this stuff. I do have a question about the 45s that they're offering. They're, he says they, they're medium, they're fast, and they're kind of medium, RBMs, meaning medium. Are they going to be able to service us or not? Is that a critical question? I think, I think we need to know that. It's a critical fact.
Couple, couple elements in discussion with the, with our, with the assets of the Coast Guard wants to use, or Station Chatham, is the conversation of the rating of the boat. The boat, the manufacturing rating is used, has certain specifications. And the U.S. Coast Guard specifications are below the manufacturer standard. So from a functionality, the Coast Guard is not using it in our, in our discussion to the, to its best capability from a physical perspective. The more important component of the conversation is having a qualified and trained personnel to operate the vessels. That is the biggest piece of the puzzle that was going to be part of the discussion. Because the proper training and crew to operate the vessels would also need to be in place for these assets. If, if, you know, whatever assets are in Chatham, we also need to have trained personnel to operate the vessels. So that's a big piece of the puzzle.
Well, I guess my question is, and I thank you, Cory, but if we did have trained personnel, could that vessel service us? State Harbor and the Fish Pier?
So it's a matter of policy that it's not a surf-capable boat.
Okay.
Okay, so Coast Guard policy.
Oh, good.
The other piece of it is that they don't have the training here because the data that they've been collecting over the course of the last 10 years or so indicated that they needed 30 or more days with high seas. And their data shows that we don't have that, which is like ridiculous. So therefore, they can't use this as a training site. And so it's like a, you know, it's just a circle of bureaucracy here, and we're kind of caught in the middle of it. And so, you know, maintaining the 42s, they say, is problematic. I think we had some really great staff at this meeting with the Admiral that are, we had three ex-Coach Guard personnel, retired Coast Guard people, or two or three there, and, and our harbor master, who is very well-qualified in knowing and understanding the arguments of why. Coast Guard says to us that they feel that they can rescue somebody at the bar, you know, with their protocol that they have without a 42, without going into the surf. And basically, what they're saying to us is, a helicopter can come in and drop down and get, grab somebody out of the water. But we all know that we have fog conditions here. There's a wind limitation. The helo takes 20 minutes to get up, approved to get up in the wa, up in the air. And it comes from Air Station Cape Cod. So pretty much, they would say that they can position a boat outside the bar or a boat inside of the bar. And so they'd wait for a body or somebody to float one way or the other with the tide, to rescue them if the helo doesn't get up, which puts resource onus on the town, which is our argument, is we have, we have a great harbor master department. We have a lot of ex-Coast Guard people there. But they're not train-surf-capable. And we're putting them at risk and their lives at risk. And that's something that we don't want to see happen. We need a shared responsibility, a better understanding of our, of what their role is, and better communications. Because this all, this was slowly slipped out of our hands without good communications, and that was just dead wrong.
Well, I think that's very well said, and I'm glad you're on the case, and our team is on the case, Shereen, to be honest with you. And I think, what I read, you know, is the next step is to get data and get... And I think, what I read, you know, is the next step is to get data and get the surf data, I mean, because you're right, it's just ludicrous to think that we're not a heavy weather station and they shouldn't have trained personnel here, so.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Anyway, I applaud Markey too. Markey's always been very responsive anytime we've reached out.
Yeah, I'm going to add a couple of comments too. You know, at the Fish Pier, I thought that Senator Markey, at first wasn't sure, I wasn't sure whether we'd really get an audience, but we had an opportunity, we stand in front of him and stop him from moving, and it's not, that's not negative. And he listened, and he said he was going to do something, and he did. So, I give him, you know, that is super for us. And it also, he does, he did it well. When I read the letter that came back from the Admiral compared to what was said before, it's a dramatic change, and I think you've made a lot of headway. Let's understand who you're talking to tomorrow. That guy is the guy in charge of making sure things happen right on Cape Cod. He's Woods Hole. He was at our 9/11 event. We spoke for a while. I poked him a little bit, called him a Colonel because I knew he was a Navy captain, but he's a, you know, his job is that. He's a Coast Guard Academy grad, been in it, been around for a while, he's a young guy for what he's doing, just remember that. But the point is, the Admiral, you know, told you to go to him for a reason, and he's going to have to implement whatever happens. So, you want that guy to understand completely what you just said, and that's my personal opinion, and I think you know that. So, I think it's important. I think it's important that he walks away with understanding that our data is just as good as theirs, and maybe they made a mistake. And if he's, and I would expect that, you know, honest individuals are going to take that. However, having said that, the comments about the 45s and the 42s, that was a decision, that was a budget decision that's been made. Now, whether or not they can change that, you need this guy locally to say, "I need it." And the 45s, they say they can do it. They get fog, yeah, helicopters can fly in fog, helicopters can fly in certain areas, but it's not the same. I mean, you know, they do it all the time. They pick up people in storms. However, you know, are they going to do it from down Coast Guard there and get here? That's a whole other issue, and I think you have a great argument there. So, I think you guys are doing great. That's all I can say. So, any other comments? No? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Mr. Chairman, just to close it up, he did say that there are no plans to close Station Chatham, so I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Next is a report, Transmittal Alternative Providing Shore Protection and Mitigating Along the Stage Harbor. Ted Kean, and oh, by the way, Ted, I read the whole thing. And let me tell you, it's, you know, from a study point of view, I was, the process, the way they framed it and the way they came out with the general descriptions, I was, and I think, I think it's a good study. Now, I'm no expert in that, but I sure appreciate the way that that report was presented. So, over to you.
Well, thank you very much. I wish I could take credit for the way the report was done, but I won't, and I chant. That's a result of John Ramsey and his group at Applied Coastal, who's on the line to give you the brief summary. Just a little background for the general public. I think folks that have sort of been paying attention, listening to me, listening to, you know, other boaters have heard the fact that our Stage Harbor entrance channel has sort of been under attack, if you will, from the Atlantic Ocean and shoaling and sediment migration over the last few years. The changes in South Beach, the changes in the inland systems, particularly the old 1987 break that has moved well far south, if you will. The break at Lighthouse, the so-called Fool's Cut have really changed conditions on our south side and has impacted our, you know, viability in all frankness of Stage Harbor and the entrance. Those that have been watching our dredging and nourishment have seen a lot of work. Those that have been watching the finances have seen a lot of money, all in support of trying to maintain that channel. So, we recognize that there was a very important issue here, that we needed to, you know, see if there were other alternatives or options to deal with this issue beyond simply, you know, dredging ad infinitum, if you will. And we were fortunate to get a coastal resiliency grant from the Coastal Zone Management at the state level. And the first round, which is what John's going to briefly discuss, was really just to sort of take a big step backwards, look at what's going on, look at the various issues associated with the shoaling, and frankly, erosion along the shoreline, and just see if there was, or what types of alternatives or options might be available to address these situations. So, John's been working, and his group's been working in Chatham waters and shorelines for a number of years, so they're well-versed in, you know, our issues. They've got a lot of numerical modeling capabilities. They brought in the expertise from our folks to the north at Center for Coastal Studies, Mark Barelli and Graham Geis in particular, that have worked in our area again, a lot. So, I think we had a great team. They've come up with some very interesting and novel approaches. This really is a first step. The next step will be, you know, forthcoming over this next year because we were fortunate to get the second round grant to sort of take those recommendations, refine them, and then begin a lot of interagency discussions, regulatory discussions, and frankly, public and, you know, policymaker discussions on seeing, you know, where are we going? What are these options going to provide? What are the costs and what are the implications? So, with that, I'll, you know, let John take over, give a very brief overview of sort of what the findings were, and be available for questions at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Welcome, John.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Board Members. I'm going to try to share my screen here, and hopefully that will work. So, do you guys see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. So, this, so, you know, as Ted mentioned, we'd gotten a CCM grant, where the town had gotten a CCM grant to look at the issues. This is something, you know, we've been studying in Pleasant Bay and Chatham Harbor for quite a long time, and obviously, when Fool's Cut happened, you know, we knew there were going to be some rapid changes. And sure enough, you know, we've all seen what's happened, and I just wanted to go through this, just a very brief look at what we've done. I know this is probably going to raise more questions than answer them at this point, but I, we sort of just wanted to give you guys an update and let, and give you an idea of what we're planning on for this next grant that we have coming up over this next year. So, as I'm sure all, everybody there is familiar, this is just the view of Fool's Cut and Morris Island Cut from the two different sides. On the right, looking from the north, as Fool's Cut's opened and Morris Island shoreline going around to Crescent Beach and the Stage Harbor entrance. And then, looking at it from the other side, you know, looking up towards the Fool's Cut and looking east. And one of the things, obviously, as Ted had mentioned, is trying to keep that channel open to Stage Harbor is becoming quite the challenge. So, you know, one of the things that we were trying to look at is, you know, besides the fact that there's quite a bit of erosion happening at Crescent Beach, there's also incredible amount of tidal flow coming across the flats there, and all of that is leading to quite a bit of extra shoaling. And so, what are some options that you could look at, and how long is this condition going to last? And again, we, as Ted had mentioned, we leaned a bit on the Provincetown Center to address some of those concerns about how long this situation was going to last, but we're looking at something that's, that's probably going to be in some form or other over the next 10 to 15 years. We're probably going to keep seeing that Fool's Cut issue being a problem until the offshore shoals kind of pinch that shut and kind of close off basically the monomoy cut So, just wanted to throw this up as aerials. It's just a kind of a dramatic way of looking at it. I don't know if my cursor's easy to see, but in March 2011, you know, obviously, the shoreline was attached, the south inlet going up into Chatham Harbor was quite wide. By June, you can see how pinched off that is, and because that gets pinched off, it's eroding away at South Beach, and eventually, South Beach breaks through, forms Fool's Cut, and that, then again, that continues to just migrate south with a very rapid migration. But one of the things that does is to open that channel, and obviously, that's creating a whole different set of activities, and a lot of sand is moving generally from east to west. And I can talk about that a little bit with some of the modeling work that we've done as well. So, one of the things that's probably not wealth, not maybe common knowledge to everyone except people who maybe walk along Crescent Beach, is that beaches are actually eroding extremely rapidly. This is just since 2016. We're looking at the middle part of that beach, some of the thinnest part of that beach has eroded almost 20 feet per year. And so, really, that beach at its narrowest point is about 125 feet wide. So, if this continues, you know, we're looking at, you know, another five years or so, and that's not even including storm activity. Another five years or so, that beach could potentially breach and cause, you know, the inlet to return to where it was back in the early 1960s. And I'm sure that most of you are aware that the Stage Harbor entrance was moved in that time period for, in a way, for similar reasons. So, it was because there was a lot of shoaling in that area, and it was being, was exposed, so the old inlet was in this area. The Army Corps moved it to where it was, and a lot of this is actually a filled dike. So, it's actually considered an Army Corps structure of sorts. So, we did a lot of numerical modeling. Ted had mentioned this. I don't want to go into it in great detail, I just wanted to show some results, and these are just arrow plots. On the left is maximum ebb currents, on the right is maximum flood currents. And when I mean ebb currents, it's ebbing towards the Atlantic Ocean, and maximum flood currents, it's flooding from the Atlantic Ocean into Nantucket Sound. And one of the things, the length of the arrows are the strength of the velocity, and one of the things you definitely see on the left is that the flows going out are in this blue color, they're very low. So, really, you very rarely even get a turn of tide going in that direction. Nearly all the time, the flow is coming in Fool's Cut and coming across towards Stage Harbor. And basically, that's, you know, what we as engineers look at as a unidirectional flow for the most part. So, that gave us some opportunities to look at alternatives that might be more used in a riverine-type situation, as opposed to a typical tidal situation that has equal flow going in both directions. So, that gave us, gave us some, you know, I guess, different ideas when we were looking at how to maybe address some of the issues that are going on. But again, there's, there are certainly a whole slew of issues and a whole slew of alternatives that could be looked at. So, this whole range of alternatives that we looked at went from, you know, the typical, let's not do anything and just see what happens, as Ted had mentioned, you know, that, you know, besides the fact that we're going to probably lose Crescent Beach in the next five years or have a breach in it, we're also looking at, you know, massive amounts of dredging that would be required over the years, and it's not quite sure if that would be sustainable in the long term. Also, briefly looked at a couple of redirection, well, redirection of the Stage Harbor channel, which really wouldn't accomplish much because the main area of shoaling is actually right at that confluence of where you could potentially redirect that channel. And there was another thought that what would happen if we moved it over to, you know, the bend in Oyster River. And obviously, that comes with its whole slew of problems, but, you know, just having some brief conversations with some of the regulators, you know, that basically is a non-starter. And I think, you know, even for, you know, obviously, the Chatham residents who live along Oyster River, they would probably think that's a non-starter as well. So, that was kind of discounted pretty quickly. We came up with a whole range of different flow control structures. I'm only showing these ones that kind of ended up falling out of the, basically, coming up with the concept of some temporary structures, that these are the ones that sort of fell out as something that was actually viable. You know, these types of structures would be just made of vertical piles that could be pulled once the problem goes away over the next 15 or 20 years, and it would just create a series of basically ways of redirecting the tidal currents offshore, which means the sediment would move offshore, and then the attempt is to also accrete material on the updraft side to protect that area of Crescent Beach. But these are a couple, or a series of different ones we looked at, and primarily, the two ones that seem to be the best options are B and F through the modeling that we were looking at. And so, this is B and F. This is, this is the B option. This is the F option. The reason I'm sort of showing this is just the structure layout. One of the things that, obviously, you guys deal with a lot is the monomoy refuge. One of the glorious things of F is it actually is technically outside of the wildlife refuge boundary. That was done, you know, we wanted to make sure we could come up with an option that could be kept out of the boundary just to make sure we were looking at that issue. On the other hand, that one is likely, has to deal with the actual Army Corps dike, because that's where the Army Corps dike is. On the other hand, this one is in the old natural part of Harding's Beach likely, but it actually goes into the wildlife refuge. And again, these were basically optimized to look at not only protecting Crescent Beach, but also trying to minimize the amount of material that was migrating towards Stage Harbor. And the way we did that is we looked at this observation line A and B, which were basically sediment transport. We looked at about sediment transport going across those lines within the modeling. And so, one of the things you see is if we don't do anything, that's the blue line. This is just the sediment over time as the, over a one-year period, basically, or over, I guess it's about four-month period, but it gives you an idea of, at some point, it tails out, but the, but basically, you get somewhere on the order of 40,000 cubic yards of material being transported across that area over, you know, over a stormy season. If we go to alternative B, we're basically cutting that down by about 20%, and then if we go to this alternative F, which is the furthest one west, we actually get more than cut in half. So, we're looking at a great reduction in the amount of transport that is heading towards Stage Harbor, and it's also moving a lot of that material further out south rather than directly where you're getting the shoaling right now. And this is just a plot of what the difference between the existing conditions and this, the example with alternative F. And so, where you see blue, that's basically an increase in erosion, and where you see red, it's an increase in accretion. And it's hard to tell with a scale, but basically, this accretes all the way through this area, protecting the beach, and you're going to a significant reduction in the amount of sediment that is heading into the Stage Harbor channel. So, that's, you know, we're looking at that as a positive. You know, there's no silver bullet that's going to solve everything, but this is something that we're looking to take to the next level. And so, as Ted mentioned, we have another CCM grant. A lot of what we did this past year was really just brainstorming and trying to come up with alternatives and scenarios. You know, this next year, we really want to make sure that we're, you know, optimizing that approach, assessing the resource areas, seeing what potential impacts there are. But a major part of what we're looking to do is coordinating with the stakeholder groups, and that obviously means all the local boards, et cetera, making sure everybody's brought along and understands what we're trying to do, understanding that this is a, you know, the approach is a temporary measure that can be easily put in and taken out, even though it's a, you know, looks like a significantly large structure or series of structures, it's certainly something that can be done in a temporary manner. And then, obviously, we also have to deal with, you know, coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Regardless of whether, we're actually on either one's property. We certainly are going to be having some impact on, you know, redirecting flows and redirecting sediment. So, it's something that we just need to address. And then, the idea is to more fully develop those alternatives and basically go into the Massachusetts EPA pre-application process and get a meeting with the regulators and make sure we're moving everything in the right direction. And I think that's the end of my slides. I just wanted to...
Thank you, John. Any comments from the... And then Jeff? Jeff was first? Okay, Jeff?
Fascinating stuff. I was, I was, I boated when there was a dike there before they moved the channel. That was early 60s, and I boat there now. And what's stunning to me is the amount of erosion on Crescent Beach, never mind the amount of sand that flows into the Stage Harbor channel and that we have to, then again, dredge. But is that the concept, basically redirecting the flow of water so that it's deflected... But is that the concept, basically redirecting the flow of water so that it's deflected from, well, it's aggregated there behind the dike and then deflected away from Crescent Beach and hopefully with less going into the Stage Harbor Channel? That's my first question. I think that, I think the answer is yes, but, but what are the vein structures that we, you're thinking about planting in there, and how the heck do you keep them anchored? I understand a jetty, but I don't quite understand the vein structures. And the analysis you did on the flow, like a river, I mean, the flow is from east to west. I mean, it's strong, too. It's wild through there. And so that concept, or the concept of treating it more like a river than not, I think, you know, was viable, at least intuitively viable. But anyway, just fascinating stuff. And the aerial photographs are phenomenal. The one of the dredge at work, to see the channel cut is just phenomenal. But anyway, I'll stop there and, you know, it's pretty interesting work here.
Yeah, I will say that Ted gets all those, I think you, I don't think you pay for those, right, Ted? You get those flown for free or something relatively cheap?
Yeah.
Well, no, they're not free, but we're very fortunate to have a very accomplished local photographer and a very accomplished local pilot and a existing airport right in town. So, you know, for the money, we get some great photographs that everyone's seeing when I do presentations. Without my presentations, I'd be pretty boring, or without the pictures, I'd be pretty boring.
Yeah, and I guess as far as, you know, the question, yes, certainly, what we are trying to, you're, basically, we're trying to trap sand along Crescent Beach as it comes along, but we're also trying to slow the currents down that are near shore and redirect them offshore so that the more sediment that's moving offshore is transported more in a southerly direction. The veins themselves, we have not decided exactly what they're made of, but right now, we are probably leaning, and I hate to say this because it sounds visually ugly, but because they may only be temporary, they may end up being made of sheet pile driven into the bottom. Because you really, because of the strength of the currents, it's very difficult, you know, they're going to have to be piled supported in some way in order to deal with that environment. So, you know, we haven't gotten that far yet, but it is something that we are, you know, dealing with. And I did unshare my screen, correct?
Yeah, you're good. We just, we have...
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I'm sure it's going to be expensive, but when you think about what we're spending on dredging, et cetera, you know, I have to really kind of see what the cost might or might not be and how much we anticipate spending on dredging going forward, because we spend an awful lot now. Anyway, I just thought it was, it's fascinating. It's good stuff. Thank you. And the report was excellent. It was excellent.
Well, thank you very much.
Dean, and then Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ted and Mr. Ramsey for the report. I did read the report entirely, and Jeff just touched on this at the end. I think any effort to try to come up with a solution that would reduce the dredging that's necessary in Stage Harbor, which is an impermanent solution and entails substantial annual cost, is worth taking a look at. Just a process question. I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer, so it was a little challenging to read the report. I'm glad there were a lot of pictures in it. And the next, I'm sure Mr. Kokolos, who is and has an engineering background...
No, 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 mechanical, this is not...
Well, it's closer than, closer than what I have. So my only request would be going forward when you do your next report, if perhaps you could put a short executive summary upfront. I think that would be helpful. But it was an excellent, truly an excellent report, and your presentation tonight really simplified it for me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Shereen? Thank you, Dean. Shereen?
John, Ted, thank you for this. Ted knows that I geek out over dredging and all that kind of stuff, so it was really fun to read the report. So I think this is a really valid solution to go forward with, because I think it will mitigate some of our million-dollar-a-year dredging stuff. If anybody also knows that for generations, my family is, have been mariners out of Stage Harbor, going back to the beginning of time, and I pretty much live in that harbor and Crescent Beach and Nantucket Sound. So I've seen the changes, I've seen the dramatic changes in the last year. The backside of Crescent Beach is just sheared, you know, straight down. There really, you know, there's a lot of sand up front of it that there's a flat when it goes low, but, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot. I mean, there's archaeological things out there that have occurred. There's been a, there's an old house where there was a chimney foundation or a foundation that was found there. We were out there, there was huge rock all of a sudden that showed up. I mean, there's stuff that's just popping up everywhere, but, you know, I really, really, it's really cool to see this move forward. Pretty much, the pilings used to be out there, and that was, that, you know, they're gone. So, I mean, you know, that slowed things down, but again, we didn't have the Fools Cut. Some of the things, just as an action item for the town itself, is I think that the South Coastal Harbor Committee and Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee really need to have their eyes on this and give us their feedback going along, not just at the end of this, but actually, you know, they're not regulating agencies per se, but each one of those organization committees have a level of membership that have a lot of expertise around the water. I especially want to hear from Shellfish Advisory Committee, because there is resource out there. I went clamming just right at the pilings this summer for our little clam shack party. And so just to hear that. It'd be interesting to find out what the revetments at Morris Island, how that would impact, you know, how they would be impacting if there, if we were redirecting or all of a sudden redirecting some of the water flow from the east. And those revetments are sort of up and along there. We see at, in Chatham Harbor, that we've, close to the revetments, there's deeper water, real deep water, and then the shoaling. And I know that, I don't know if that's going to be looked at further, that's further to the east and northeast, I guess. But, you know, just, I guess, because for every action, there's a reaction, obviously, and we just want to see further down the road where we are, where that new channel's going to end up. Obviously, with the pilings, that's going to create a new channel, and that channel, obviously, will be in the fish and wildlife area, and so, you know, it'll be a lot of things that reactionary questions going along. I'm sure that the next phase of the grants and studies will help answer, obviously. But I really, I think, as I said, I'd like to hear from the committees that are part of this, hear them give a review of it and a little nod, or any questions or concerns that they may see going forward. So that it just mitigates some of the difficulty in getting, getting something approved moving through the town. So thank you very much for the report. It was really...
Thank you, Shereen. That's a, that's a good point. I do have one, just one other comment, and I think that it's important, it seemed to me, just going through this, and I agree with Dean, the presentation was simplified a lot of things. And at the same time, I think you look at the obvious, and it doesn't dawn on you till someone sometimes put, you know, mentions it, like, we're going through a cycle and things change. And you mentioned going back to 1964, where some things were before, and the, you know, our coastal changes. And I think importantly, you're looking at solutions right now that are, quote, "temporary", that you can remove as things happen. I think that's important. It's simple to say, I mean, and things aren't cheap. But I just have a curious, as you move forward, you use certain, and you called it, and I don't want to get into the details, I'm not a model person, hydrodynamic model. You use that model. These are, these are consistent, is it one model or a number of models, and they're consistent? Because you have a changing environment that's going in all kinds of directions out there, although you use the river, I thought, was, made sense to me, you know, just looking at it as an outsider, that that made sense. When you move ahead, do you have different kinds of models that you're going to be using? Or we get down to, you know, the guys that have to make things happen, and they get out there and put, put stuff in as opposed to just modeling?
So, I mean, the models that we have are, you know, the model that we have does everything that we need it to do. There is, you know, obviously, discussions of maybe getting a little bit better data on the changes to, especially at the southeastern side of Morris Island there, there's some sand building up that is kind of revert, you know, changing the currents a little bit. But we do have, you know, we have good measurements in Stage Harbor and, you know, in Chatham Harbor, which we know what's driving the system very well. So this model really is a good basis for doing exactly the, you know, solving the problem that we have, and we're able to simulate, you know, any, any type of structure in it very well. So it's, it's a, you know, kind of a, you know, this is kind of the highest-end modeling that you could use in a situation like this, and it's, you know, I think it will be very effective in helping, helping decide what to do moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
I just have a quick follow-up, that you mentioned Crescent Beach, it's getting really narrow and it's eroding, as Shereen noted, and we've all noted the scarping there. How, if we didn't do anything, how long do you think we have before Crescent Beach would break through?
I mean, if things stay the same...
Stay the same, yeah.
We're looking at five to six years. But I will say, you know, one of the things, and I didn't mention, but one of the things we've certainly discussed is if this temporary solution is put in, you know, there is still going to be some need to dredge some amount of material likely from Stage Harbor for at least a portion of time, and this may give you the opportunity with these structures to actually place the material on Crescent Beach and help its resiliency going into the future directly, not just with the, with the veins themselves.
Got it. Yep, thank you. It was good.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, John and Ted. Appreciate the input, and hopefully, we'll get something done in the next year or two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to convening the Affordable Housing Trust. I see Megan's on, but I don't see Bob. Robert? Bruce. I always want to call him Bruce.
They did send us another link, so he might be in that room.
I'll wait just a minute or so before I try to convene.
Maybe somebody can visit for him to convene.
I see a telephone on there. Is that you, Bruce? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. Let me start with the board. Let's see. Let's see. Trustee, trustee Davis.
Present.
Present. Trustee Metters.
Present.
Trustee Castro.
Present.
Trustee Dykens.
Present.
Trustee Kokolos is present. Trustee Megan Story.
Present.
Trustee Bruce Bean. Okay, Bruce is not available. Go ahead.
And I didn't see him in the other meeting either, so...
Okay, thank you. Well, now that we've convened the Affordable Trust Committee, we need to go into executive session. Can I have a motion to enter executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Number 3 and Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease or value of real property, parentheses, update on property acquisition for affordable slash attainable housing, paren, and to discuss strategy regarding litigation, parentheses, skydive Cape Cod litigation status, close parenthesis, and the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating and litigating positions of the public body with no return to open session. My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that the Affordable Housing Trust would be limited to the attainable affordable housing piece of this meeting, and then they would be excused, and we would continue as a select board on the rest of the item for the executive session.
Yes, that's the case. Yes.
That's correct. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. All right, let me take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Megan?
Aye.
I don't even know if that's necessary. Yeah, it would be. It is. Okay. And the chair says aye, that's, we're into executive session, excuse me, executive session. And thank you, Chatham. Thank you, everyone who's participated tonight. Good night, Chatham. Thanks.